I'd like to call the order of the city council meeting of Monday, August 13th, with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Manager Carey.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, next is invocation, if you'd all stand for Barbara, Pastor Barbara West. Thanks for being here, Barbara, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, for having me. I want to be among the many who wants to congratulate Jake Dalton for representing the City of Sparks in the USA in the Olympics. Congratulations, Jake, you did well.[46.12][46.12](APPLAUSE). We are so proud of you and proud that you represented our city so well. If we could just bow our heads to pray, that'd be great. And so, our heavenly Father, we do ask for your blessing upon this fine council and everyone who is here today. What a privilege it is to be able to pray that everyone on the council, including our leader, Mayor Martini, will have the wisdom and be able to say yes to the things that need to be said yes to and say no to the things that need to have a no vote. So, we thank you for their wisdom, for their dedication, for all of them to be in attendance to take care of this meeting and council. Lord, we thank you too for Jake and his family and for all of the supporters and what a wonderful privilege and what a time he must have had there in London. And so, we thank you that we have fine young athletes such as he to represent the USA. Lord, we call upon you to give us peace and civility here in Sparks, in our own hometown, and in the USA as we think about things that need to be done and think about the election coming up. We just pray that we might share our views in love, one with another. Now, be here in this fine council led by our leader, Mayor Martini, and give us all the wisdom we need for today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor West, for those great words.
Thank you.
Do you remain standing, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance? Appropriately, Jake, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Should I come up there?
No, just start us out, maybe.
(APPLAUSE) I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jake. Okay, next is comments from the public. I don't have any speaking cards. Anyone want to speak on the comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. And I think in the motion, we're going to pull two items, Mr. Carey, is that right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw items 6.3 and 6.6 for further work. They'll return to your agenda soon.
Okay, looking for a motion, Mr. Smith.
Moved to approve the agenda as amended.
You have a second, Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously, thank you. Next is 3.1, consideration of possible approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 23rd, 2012. Any omissions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Moved to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve the minutes of July 23rd. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Lawson. Passed unanimously. Is there a train coming through here somewhere?
There is.
Stop your lines.
Railroaders. Okay, let's move on to 4.1, United States Olympian Jake Dalton Day. Mr. Dalton, could you come up to the podium and have a seat, please? And bring your parents with you too, please. So, I have a City of Sparks proclamation that I'd like to read today. Whereas twenty-year-old Jake Dalton is a Sparks resident and 2009 graduate of Spanish Springs High School, and whereas Jake is a student athlete at the University of Oklahoma, where he won two National Collegiate Athletic Association, NCAA, titles for the Sooner Men's Gymnastics Team in 2011 in the floor and the vault. And whereas among his many awards and accolades, Jake's recognitions include the 2011 World Team Bronze Medal for the US team in Tokyo and the 2011 American Cup Bronze Medal. Jake picked up two national titles on his signature events, floor and vault, at the 2011 Visa Championships in St. Paul, and was the NCAA All-Around Champion in 2012. And whereas posting the highest combined scores on floor and vault in two Olympic qualification meets, Nationals and Trials, Jake secured his spot on the London team to compete in his first Olympic Games. And whereas representing one of five members of the United States Men's Gymnastics Team at London 2012 Olympic Games is the culmination of a lifelong dream and hard work and dedication since the age of eight. And whereas Jake contributed to the Olympic Men's Gymnastic Team's fifth-place finish overall and a fifth-place finish in the individual floor exercise. And whereas I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, join with the city council and all of the citizens of Sparks in congratulating Jake Dalton, 2012 Olympic Men's Gymnastics Team member, for his outstanding performance in London. Sparks is honored and proud to acknowledge Jake's outstanding accomplishments, bringing well-deserved recognition and honor to himself, his mother Denise, Father Tim, and the City of Sparks, State of Nevada, and the United States of America. Now, therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim August 13th, 2012, as United States Olympian Jake Dalton Day.[450.81][450.81](APPLAUSE). Please say a few words, Jake, and then I have one other little presentation I'd like to make to you.
Awesome. Yeah, I just want to thank everybody, first and foremost, for being here. You know, it's just, you know, I'm so grateful to come home to such loving support and, you know, it's just, you know, I couldn't be more blessed with all the family and friends and, you know, support I have coming back home. And just, it's a great feeling to be back and haven't been here for a while, just because I've been training and trying to, you know, make that Olympic team. So, it's, you know, it's just, it's great that everybody recognizes the hard work that everybody puts in to get there and it wasn't just, it wasn't just me doing the hard work, it was my family, my friends, and everybody back at home who was cheering me on. So, I just want to thank you, everybody, for everything and the support.
Well, thank you, and we'll be looking forward to seeing you, I think, in Rio de Janeiro in four years. And you've got some more college left, I understand, so...
Yeah, absolutely.
You've got some more accolades that you'll be receiving. So, if you could come up on stage and then we'll get a picture with the council and your mom and dad.
Awesome.
I'd like to make one more presentation. So, I'd like to present this medal to Jake. And it says, "Congratulations, Jake Dalton, US Olympian and Champion Gymnast, London 2012. Sparks Hometown Hero, the citizens of Sparks are proud of you, City of Sparks."[576.66][576.66](APPLAUSE). Okay?
Can you tell us one more?
One more? Appreciate it. Thank you, guys, for coming, I appreciate it.
Congratulations again.
Hang in there. Go Sooner, go Sooners, right? Oh, Jake? Oh, Jake, one more. I'm sorry. Now, those of you that came to see Jake, you're welcome to stick around for the boring stuff if you want to do that. If you don't, you're excused. And thank you for all coming, we appreciate it, really. See you, Jake. Done, yeah, it's not going to get any better than this. It's not going to get any better than this.
It isn't, let's go.
All right, let's move on to consent items, 5.1 through 5.3. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, making a motion to approve items 5.1 through 5.3.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the consent items. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. General Business, 6.1, consideration and possible approval of the Mayor's recommendation of appointment to the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Carey.
The City of Sparks Civil Service Commission does have one term that expired on June 30th. The mayor is placing before the city council today the appointment of Louis Robert Bob Dennis. So, Mr. Bob Dennis has been selected and nominated to you for the Sparks Civil Service Commission.
Questions? Mr. Carrigan.
I don't have a question, I'm just ready to make a motion to move to confirm the appointment of Bob Dennis to the Civil Service Commission.
Do you have a second? Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Carrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve Bob Dennis as the new appointee to the Civil Service Commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously, thank you. 6.2, consideration and possible acceptance of a donation from the State of Nevada enforcing underage drinking laws grant in the amount of $10,000. Chief Kiefer. Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, I don't think we need, we've had this before, right? I was just making a motion that we accepted.
You have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve the agenda item 6.2 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Do you want to say something, Chief?
Just take the money.
Mr. Lawson. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Chief. 6.3 is consideration and possible action, oh, I'm sorry, this has been pulled. 6.4, request for update on legal costs incurred to date related to legal matters between the City of Sparks and the Sparks Municipal Court for discussion and possible direction. Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do have a request from a member of the city council, just to place on the agenda an update on the costs incurred by both parties in the legal matters between the City of Sparks and the Sparks Municipal Court. To date, the special counsel, which has been retained to represent the city in this matter, Lemmons, Grundy, and Eisenberg, we have expended $72,978.85. As special counsel to the municipal court has been Holland and Hart, and their expenses have been $134,482.94. Total expended to date as of July 31st is $207,461.79. That would complete my report and I would look for direction.
Questions, Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, I was asked by one of my constituents how much we've spent on this and I did not know, so that's why I wanted to put it on here. I just wanted to ask the question from our city manager, where do we get, where does our $72,000 come from?
The special counsel for the City of Sparks is paid for out of your general government cost center and the, if you would like the second half, the municipal court is currently paying their share of these city expenses from assessments which are collected through court proceedings.
Okay, so we, so far, both parties have spent $207,000 and has this gone to court yet?
It has made its way to the district court and at that point, we received an injunction and the city chose to appeal that injunction on, through the court process, and that matter is still before the Supreme Court. Ahead for this will be the findings of the Supreme Court on the injunction, where it would be remanded back to district court, at which time the legal process would continue. We have yet to set a trial date for this matter.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, Mr. Smith.
You know, this amount is ridiculous. Was it two years ago we went to the charter committee meetings that we're, we got sideways in this deal?
Yes, the council did speak to the charter committee back in, I believe that would be 2010.
And if I remember correctly, we were pretty much in agreement with everything they wanted, but something changed that day, I can't remember what it is, though. Do you remember? Couple of their demands changed?
No, not essentially. The court attempted to withdraw the proceedings before the charter committee, so for the record, they never advanced it. Their motion was to withdraw it and so, on the record at this charter committee, we don't have a position farther than their withdrawal.
But there was nobody there from the court, if I remember.
Yeah, that's correct. Prior to the meeting, they did ask for the item to be withdrawn. It was still on the agenda, so the charter committee did hear a presentation from members of the council and your attorney.
You know, I do remember there was a couple of items that were changed and that was the only thing we weren't in agreement with, but, you know, for the life of me, I can't think of the top of my head, so it seems ridiculous. Thank you.
Only because it is. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Carey, for asking this, being on the agenda. I think the, to me, the important question is, you know, I see how much we're spending here, but do we know what we subsidized the courts for last year? Jeff, do we know what, or anybody would have a recollection? As we, half a million dollars came out of the general fund to the courts. So, in reality, all of these costs are coming out of the general fund, because we subsidized for a half a million and out of that half a million, you know, $135,000 could have been used to go ahead and subsidize to stop the money from flowing, so all these costs are coming out of the general fund in one way or another.
Mr. Carey. Anyone else? Comments? Okay, we really don't need any action on this, Mr. Carey, do you want an action or just for discussion? Okay, Mr. Carey? No, still no. Okay. All right, let's move on to 6.5. Consideration and possible acceptance of a forensic support services agreement between Washoe County Sheriff's Office and the Sparks Police Department for possible action. Chief Kiefer.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Steve Kiefer, for the record. This was a bit more convoluted, Councilman Carey. Well, before us, we have the forensic contract that I would recommend that we do approve. The dollar amounts have been in question in the past as far as what is our fair share. Going back three years, we were billed by Sheriff Haley, the first year, over $471,000, and we paid, we were able to negotiate and pay about $179,000. And then the following year, we were billed at $436,000, which was last year, and we agreed to increase that by $35,000 for two years. And that's what I would be recommending that we would be moving for, is another two-year contract of paying $35,000 per year in addition to what we've been paying. The bill that we were, or we received this year was over $513,000. And what is before you is to accept an interlocal agreement that we would pay $249,500.
Questions, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, this bill started three years ago, right? That he started trying to collect from us for forensic services?
The dramatic increase is three years ago. We've been paying this forensic contract for well before my time, probably at least ten, if not fifteen, twenty years.
My concern is, and you know where I stand on this issue, is that as a resident of the City of Sparks pays more in property taxes to the county than they do the city. And, you know, the city, the county does not charge for their police services to their own residents. We subsidize the budget of Washoe County to enormous amounts of money every year. More money that we take in, our residents are paying to the county. The county's in charge of all police services for Washoe County. Our citizens have chosen to pay for that through a separate item from the City of Sparks, to pay for its own police department, as well as pay for the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. I don't see where we get any services from Washoe County Sheriff's Offices to speak of to justify us paying. And it's my understanding that this is not coming from the sheriff, this is coming from the county commissioners who are trying to dig for more money. And so, the way to get more money is to increase their billings to other communities to collect money for them to pay their bills. And I just think this is inappropriate, I think this is unfair to the residents of the City of Sparks to have to double pay for this service.
Mr. Schmidt.
This is for the lab and all the lab work they do up there, isn't it? Correct, it's quite extensive. We still have a process when we're dealing with, I don't want to say minor crimes, because those that are victim of those don't feel it's minor, but those that are not as serious, either our patrol officers, detectives, or our evidence, property and evidence technician will come out and work. We use forensic services, when we're talking for DNA analysis, ballistics, major crimes, where attempted murder, either shot or stabbed, officer-involved shootings, those types of services.
And if we didn't have a contract with them, we couldn't do those services ourselves, could we?
No.
And we've never paid the $400,000 that they've wanted, or the $500,000, it's always been this, thank you.
And this bill comes actually from Sheriff Haley, does it not?
Correct.
The bill that we get billed to 500 or 400 or whatever it is?
Correct, and the negotiations have been between himself and...
I'm sorry, Mr. Carrigan, just, Mr. Lawson?
Just, my question goes more along to the amount billed. Where does the 400, two years ago, $471,000 come from?
The amount fluctuates depending on the callouts. They track what services they provide for each investigation and it can be somewhat extremely complex or fairly simple. So, they provide us an invoice, so to say, with all of the crimes that they assisted on, and that's why the dollar amount moves up and down.
And so, you're able to negotiate $179,000 on that particular year?
The first, yeah, the first year where the dramatic increase took place, yes.
Where were we before that?
It was moving up in increments of $5,000 years before, when Chief Dotson was in place, and I don't know the history, but nothing was as dramatic as this increases three years ago.
And so, you managed from their bill to negotiate a discount of 50%?
That's one way of looking at it optimistically, yes.
I was going to say, I'm going to take you with me on business calls, because we can make some money together, but I just, I have the feeling that the numbers are thrown on the wall, kind of a thing. If they're willing to, they're going to bill us for $436,000 of services, or $513,000 of services, and then settle for half that amount. That's not jiving with me, and I kind of go back to Ron's comment that, you know, we are already paying for that through our property taxes in the City of Sparks.
Right, I could understand that. The number's not an arbitrary number. I have just the justification showing the services and the dollar per hour and the amount of different crimes they've investigated. So, I feel confident that the data isn't just pulled now. I think that gives the sheriff some flexibility. And then, we're still in the same area, doing the same type of work, and we assist each other in other areas, whether it's criminal investigations, internal affairs investigations we do for each other. So, I think in the spirit of working with us, he's flexible in that regard, and I think that's what has, not so much my ability to negotiate, is his ability to be flexible with it.
I kind of look at it the other way around. The glass is half-full here, you know. I think Sheriff Haley understands that the budget crunches that we're all under and is willing to work with us, whether it's your ability to negotiate or not, which I think probably has something to do with it. But the problem I have is, I don't think we, if we had to set up this lab and do this by ourselves, we could never do it for $250,000 or $500,000 or $700,000 or $800,000.
No, we couldn't.
We would never be able to do it.
Correct, I apologize. They're a top-notch lab, they're nationally certified, you can't even begin to look elsewhere for services, so in that regard, they somewhat have it monopolized.
Mr. Carey.
Just wanted to add a couple of points to the discussion from my part in the process. Sheriff Haley is carrying out the direction of the county commissioners in working with our chief to come up with a forensic contract. At approximately three years ago, as the county entered a very similar recession that we went through here in Sparks, they directed a study be done to improve their recovery of services they're providing to others. And this particular lab serves all of northeastern Nevada, all of the surrounding counties and cities who are doing police work, their work does arrive here. So, they did base their adjustment to Sparks three years ago based upon our volume and they continue to track that and do fee recovery. We are, have, and this second generation of this contract, been able to move that up incrementally, and the sheriff continues to provide the services when requested by the City of Sparks. And I think I wanted to make sure on the record that we knew that it's Sheriff Haley's commitment to Sparks to run the best lab and produce the best results for anyone who's a victim of a crime, so that our police department can get the convictions that they seek. So, just wanted to add that to your discussion.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the sheriffs and the county commissioner giving us a, you know, an estimate cost for our services. You know, one of the things I've been asking for for 11 years is a detailed analysis of what we do get for our money right now. And in 11 years now, the sheriff's department's never produced a report on what services the City of Sparks gets for our taxpayer dollars to the county. And I think that that's got to enter into the discussion, or otherwise, we will continue seeing a county commission that will continue fishing for more money, and this is $250,000. You know, that's two and a half officers to your department, that's two and a half firefighters, you know, we're adding in two to four more positions back in. This is a lot of money today. And, you know, if they're going to continue thinking that Sparks is a deep well, we've committed to this agreement now, $35,000 each year, we still don't know what we're getting for our taxpayer dollars. And I think that's just something that I can't continue to let go on and say that I'll just continue to accept these bills from the county without the taxpayers knowing what they're getting for their dollars right now. We have to answer the taxpayers for what happens, I think the county has to answer to the city council for what's going on. Thank you.
Again, Chief, can we, can we run our police department without this service?
No.
So...
Not effectively, we could, not effectively.
How can we solve any crimes, murders, those kind of things? I don't know, I'm not particularly happy about the whole deal either, but I don't know, again, if we start our own lab, startup costs alone are going to be tremendous, plus what we're going to spend hiring more people and doing this ourselves every year is going to be a tremendous expense. We're not talking about two or three firemen here, we're talking about 10 or 12. Mr. Ratty.
I'm prepared to make a motion. So, I'll move to, move the council to approve the forensic support services agreement with the Washoe County Sheriff's Office and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Carrigan, to approve the agenda items outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass this 4-1, Mr. Schmidt. No, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate your hard work on this. I know it's not easy and it's sometimes difficult for us to, and our taxpayers to understand, but it's something that has to be done, so appreciate it. understand, but it's something that has to be done, so appreciate it. Let's move on to 6.7. Consideration of possible direction to initiate a code amendment to review the period of time a recreational vehicle is permitted to occupy any recreational vehicle park within the city of Sparks and providing other matters properly relating thereto. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, city council. Tim Thompson, senior planner, for the record. At the request of Mayor Martini, this item has come before the council to take consideration and give possible direction to city staff to initiate a code amendment to review the period of time a recreational vehicle is permitted to occupy any recreational vehicle park within the city of Sparks. As many of you recall, several weeks ago, we had an applicant come forward with an amendment to, a request to amend their plan development handbook to change the amount of time that an RV could stay in the park. Currently, the city's code is 25 days. As a result of that process, staff has been asked to come before the council, request seeking direction from the council. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, one thing I want to make, this is all recreational vehicle parks, right? Not just one particular one? I think that was the biggest problem we had before.
Correct. This would, this would be for all recreational vehicle parks that are subject to the city's code.
Have you had anyone call you that's against this so far? Have you talked to anybody else other than...
To my knowledge, to my knowledge, no. I will say that there is, the potential that there is one RV park that is grandfathered in and may not be subject to any of the rules or regulations.
Questions? Mr. Lawson?
Let me ask the other side of that. Do you have anybody that was opposed to it?
To my knowledge, we've had no, no one that is opposed or in favor of, with the exception of the folks that are running the RV parks themselves.
Pretty early in the conversation, certainly. Mr. Schmidt?
You made a statement that the ones that come under the city's control?
Yes.
Yeah. Why wouldn't they all come under the laws, except for the one? Is that what you're talking about?
Staff is still looking into this particular matter. However, our initial research shows that the Rivers Edge RV Park was established prior to the adoption of our code and may not be subject to our ordinances.
Okay.
And we are, we are doing further research. We, we're going to the county to research the county records to see how that was established and whether or not there's any entitlement that they are obligated to operate under so that we can assess where we are with that regard.
Other questions? Mr. Lawson?
If I read correctly in the staff report, this is just bringing us into compliance with what the state of Nevada statutes are, correct? We're more restrictive at this time than the state of Nevada?
Our review of NRS doesn't show that there are any specific timeframes, with the exception of a definition that's in NRS, the definition of what a recreational vehicle park is. And within that definition, it talks about a time limit of 90 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
I move to direct staff to initiate a code amendment to Title 20 zoning code of the Sparks Municipal Code to review the period of time a recreational vehicle is permitted to occupy any recreational vehicle park within the city of Sparks and providing other matters properly related.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Move by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve Agenda Item 6.7. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Tim. Getting closer, Bill. Every time I say that, something happens. I'm not gonna say it anymore. Okay, thanks. 6.8, discussion and possible approval of a selection or no selection of a bill draft request for the 77th session of the Nevada Legislature. Mr. Mayberry?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. Mr. Carey, Mr. Adams. Adam Mayberry, your community relations manager, for the record. The item before you allows you to discuss and possibly select a bill draft request for the 77th session of the Nevada State Legislature. The last time we met, the direction was given to staff to work with the Nevada League of Cities, identify the bill draft requests that they will carry. They have an opportunity to carry five. They have a legislative committee that the mayor serves on. The mayor and I attended about three of those meetings over the course of the last month. The League of Cities has identified five bill draft requests. They are stated in the staff report, however, one of them has been omitted and has been replaced with a bill draft request that will be coming from the council of mayors. The one that will be removed is item number three. That's to reform method for producing census data by state demographer. That will be replaced with a BDR from the mayors, the council of mayors, that broadens the sales tax base. The notion there is to decrease the sales tax while expanding it to other services, thereby making it revenue neutral. We have not seen any language to that effect, but late last week, the board of directors approved those five bill draft requests. Again, the mayor and I have been participating in the League of Cities Committee, Legislative Committee, with support from Councilwoman Ratty. And the five issues that the league is presenting are not any of the items that were on our matrix that we've been discussing, excuse me, that we've been discussing the last few months. However, two of them, item A and B, are in fact in the legislative process moving forward in some form or another. And the others will likely be tackled by individual lawmakers, and will, the intent would be to work closely and individually with those particular lawmakers as they move through the system. So with that in mind, it was, it was a recommendation of the city's legislative committee, Mr. Carey, the mayor, Councilwoman Ratty, sit on to, at this time, not pursue a bill draft request for this session.
Questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam, when is our drop dead date to submit? When, if we want to do it?
September 1st.
September 1st.
Yes, sir. So we have the 27th again? Yes.
Could, could we then possibly, since there is some talk of one being on out there that we want to, we really want to talk about it, just continue this item to the next meeting?
Certainly.
Just continue it, and that way there, we can run right to the end if we have to, if...
We can do that, absolutely. Yeah, we can re-agenda it, can't we?
Which is easier. Well, easier to... Continue it today with your action, or I can be asked to put it on the agenda, either way?
So is there, is there anything on anybody's mind that they want to bring up today that may be something that we can use as a BDR? Anybody have anything that they want to do?
Okay. Okay.
So we need a motion to continue to the meeting of August 27th? Do we have a second?
Second.
Move by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith, to continue this item until August 27th meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Okay, 6.9, performance reviewed by the city council of city manager Sean Carey to consider the character, conduct, professional competence, or mental health of the city manager and/or consideration of possible approval of extension of the employment agreement through 7/31/2014. Chris?
Good afternoon, mayor, to council. Chris Severson, employing customer relations manager. As provided in the city manager contract, this performance will be reviewed every July. We did two performance reviews this year, one for direct reports and one from the mayor and council. You've been provided both of those. We had five responses for the city council and mayor, and seven responses for the direct report. Today, you are able to discuss performance and review and possible action on his contract extension. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Thanks, Chris. Questions for Chris? Mr. Schmidt?
Maybe just a few comments. I just want to thank Sean for the work he does. I think he's doing a great job for us, and I'll be supporting the motion. So, Sean, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Ms. Ratty?
I would just echo Councilman Smith's comments. I think that our city manager has done an excellent job in some challenging times. It's not easy work right now, probably maybe never as easy to be a city manager, but certainly the last four years that I've been involved, have been some challenging decisions and some tough leadership. And I appreciate Sean's communication, and he keeps the council informed and keeps me with the information that I need to be effective, which I appreciate again. So just a great job, and look forward to working with you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too thank Sean for going through the year. Good, good job this year. I appreciate it. The only thing I would like to go ahead and see is that, you know, we're carrying over contracts since 2004, which has really outdated information in it. I think probably for next year, we should do a fresh contract start, you know, going nine years on a renewal. I think we should look, relook at the contract and do a fresh one with all the proper information in it.
Certainly.
But this year, I'm not gonna, it's not, you know, it's already on the agenda, not gonna worry about it. Thank you.
Mr. Carrigan?
Mayor, thank you. I'd like to echo my thanks to Sean. It's been tough the last couple of years, budget-wise, and that's, that's our biggest hurdle, and we're doing a pretty good job over here. And also, Ron took my, my suggestion. I thought maybe we should take a look at your contract too and kind of tweak it up a little bit, because this has been a while. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion we approve an extension of the city manager's employment agreement to July 31, 2014.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Move by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve the contract to 7/31/2014. And just from me too, Sean, thank you very much. Great job. You've made some tremendous and great recommendations to us as a council. I think you've followed what the recommendations that we've given you too, and, you know, I appreciate you challenging us and challenging me, especially, I really enjoy working with you. Our relationship is great, so I look forward to continuing that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote. What? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Carey.
You want to vote before?
Yeah. All right. Passed unanimously. It's passed unanimously now, Mr. Carey.
First of all, thanks to all the employees. We have, they're a great staff here. Every department is led by a great leader who puts in a ton of time, and we take great pride in getting it right here whenever we can. And when it's going wrong, we also make sure we give you the information that you need to know the challenges we're facing. So I appreciate working with this council. I appreciate the hard work you do, and it makes, it makes for good relationships when we can openly discuss things, disagree. And this staff follows your lead. When you decide something, that's what we get behind. So it's been a pleasure, and I look forward to, to working with you for years to come. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to planning and zoning items, public hearings. PCN 12020 Alpha Azar, consideration of and possible action on a request for a special use permit. Mr. Rundle, welcome.
Good afternoon. Jim Rundle, senior planner, here to present a special use permit request, as the mayor said, from Alpha Azar. I'll quickly point out where the location is. But it is over on, near the intersection of Vista Boulevard on the north side of Interstate 80, along Briarly, across the street from the hotel that is over there. Fairfield Inn? It's highlighted in the blue, and as I said, the interstate and the intersection Vista and I-80. Quickly, to the city council, this application went to the planning commission, was unanimously forwarded to the city council with a recommendation of approval. The reason it is at the city council is this is not actually a typical special use permit. It falls under the Nevada revised statutes as a conditional use permit, because the site will have some chemicals that are on a certain list within the Nevada revised statutes that require staff to take it to the planning commission and then to the city council for ultimate approval. And that's why it is here today. The applicant is here to address any questions that you may have. They admitted or conferred with staff and are in agreement with the conditions that we've proposed on the, on the application. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions for Jim? Mr. Lawson?
How does this affect it being in TOD slash employment?
So the...
Would it be any different if there was no TOD overlay?
No.
Okay. I guess that was a simpler question.
If it were zoned industrial, essentially, we would still have to come in for a special use permit, because they want to utilize chemicals that are on that list with the state. And that's what dictates the entitlement for the special use permit. This, if it were, if they didn't have any of those chemicals that are on that list, it would have been approved by building permit. We, we actually, through our code revisions over the last couple of years, we removed this from needing a special use permit. It could have gone right to building permit, essentially, but because they're, they want to utilize some of the chemicals on that state list, we have to do the conditional use permit.
And is this part of the section we're looking at removing out of the TOD?
It is. And at that same, well, at a recent planning commission meeting, they did forward that to the city council to do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Ratty?
I believe the answer is no, but I just want to affirm that it doesn't require any additional monitoring on our part, say through our fire department or through the Washington County Health Department or anything along those lines?
We've forwarded the application to more people than we typically do. That state statute also referenced who we needed to forward the application to. One of them was the state fire marshal's office. The state fire marshal's office wrote us a letter that they had coordinated with Bob King to have him conduct what they would do at the site. And from what I understand, everything is worked out, and the city will be doing their typical monitoring that they would do at a site that wants to do this type of use. So they will monitor it through their yearly inspections with the business license and that type of thing. But I, upfront, we've had numerous meetings that included the city's fire department. And from what I understand, the applicant, who can speak more to this, has worked out, I don't want to say issues, but worked out all the concerns that our fire department had with the site. They have quite a, a system to, for attenuation of any type of issues at the site. And I'd like the applicant to speak further to that, councilman.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. My question was along that line. Is there any, you keep referring to this list of chemicals. Is there anything in this council? I'm not a chemist, so I can't tell you what the difference is. Is there anything we should know about ahead of time that is in our city? Or is this, do we have these chemicals all over the city? Is this just a different application?
Well, I don't think we have them all over the city. We, we've done, in my time here, just a handful, maybe one, one to five special use permits for chemicals that are on that list. So I don't think that they're all over the city. And at this site, they will be coming in in incredibly small bottles. They, they had a example of, of one of the bottles at the planning commission meeting. So this is the size of bottle that they'll be, be coming in. And from what I understand, they will be shipping with two UPS vans a day, so there won't be triple trailers running into the site at significant amount of traffic that, that move the chemicals in and out. And they'll be putting them in just small boxes and shipping them out. So from what we've been told, outside of the, going through the special use permit process, and them having chemicals that are on that list in very small amounts, that's why we're here today. I don't believe that it's because it's a significant amount of danger for the city or its residents.
I guess, I guess for me, you know, you, you always get the backside in case a very unfortunate accident happens. You said you should have known better to go ahead and do this. So maybe, maybe we can elaborate a little bit more and have Mr. King go ahead and just talk about what type of chemicals we are gonna have there on sites, what kind of quantities we are talking about, and he's deeming that, you know, everything is appropriate at this time.
Yeah.
Because there's always the unfortunate accidents, and so you should have known.
Sure.
You should have asked that question. You should have known what was going on.
Sure, councilman. And that probably be more appropriate, that it's a little bit out of my realm as a...
That's the reason I'm asking the questions, to make sure we're all covered here.
Would you like...
We'll have Mr. King come up in a minute. Let's finish the questions, and then we'll talk with the applicant and then go over Mr. King's presentation. Mr. Schmidt?
I read in here you're gonna have 12 initial employees and hope to double that in the next couple of years. And right now, you're supplying the West Coast from Massachusetts, and this will...
And right now, you're supplying the west coast from Massachusetts, and this will be your west coast distribution site.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, applicant, Mr. Krimpotic and the applicant want to come on up? This is not your first endeavor in this kind of enterprise, is it?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. John Krimpotic with KLS Planning, representing Alpha Azar. Deb Grokut is the general manager of North America. You know, we're here for, I got a PowerPoint, she's got a PowerPoint, but I think Jim did a fine job of kind of giving you background. It sounds like there's more questions about safety, and then, of course, Mr. King can get engaged in that. So, she is clearly the expert on the operation and the safety, if you want to leave it at that and just...
Sure.
Okay.
How many operations like this are you running, Deb?
We have eight facilities like this globally. The one on the east coast is the only one in North America for this application.
Questions. Mr. Lawson?
Have you met all the conditions for approval, in particular, number six with the hotel?
We did meet with the hotel. We met with the general manager, Brad Lastner, about, I think it was the same day of planning commission or maybe a day before. We are expecting a meeting, excuse me, a letter from them that says we met and they're satisfied with what we discussed. Their questions were, and I thought good questions, because without knowing what this really is, simply shipping in bottles like this that are conclosed and then sending them out to their clients in California, primarily pharmaceutical companies and laboratories and universities that do research, you don't know that. You're thinking about 55-gallon drums, those kind of things. So, he was asking about odors, about parking impacts, because, you know, being directly across the street, and he seemed very comfortable. Certainly can't put words in his mouth, but we're talking about 12 employees here and very little truck and van traffic for deliveries, and then there's 50 parking spaces available. So...
So, the majority of this is prescription-type stuff?
It's not directly prescription. It goes into laboratory testing, like the forensic laboratories. So, we do very specific standards that are guaranteed. So, our terminology is the high assay, you know, really high purity chemicals, and they often are dispatched in these boxes. They're often dispatched in one at a time. So, there's a lot of volume of very small items that are going out to all different laboratories across the country, and California is our number-one market, actually behind Massachusetts. That's number two. So, although we're east coast located, we needed to make this move to get close to our customers.
Is there any security concerns with your, people maybe want to break in and grab some of your chemicals?
We do carry some metal compounds, some precious metals that go into medical applications, wires for heart operations, things like that. But they, there's such small volumes, they would literally have to take all the stock.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, do we want to invite, you have anything else that...
I'm fine.
You guys want to... Do we need a PowerPoint, folks, or... Okay. Let's hear from Mr. King.
Okay.
And answer that question, and then I think we should be good to go. Okay, Bob, give us, you know, if there's any concerns on your part that they haven't met or anything, let us know, or if we're good to go, let us know that too, please.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Robert King, fire marshal for record. I can tell you that I've met with this company quite a few times. They were very diligent in setting up meetings with me and showing me their entire operation, how they store things, how they distribute things, what type of fire protection that they will have in their new building. And actually, I think I can put you at ease as of to say that the fire protection that I've seen so far that they will be installing in the building is above and beyond what they actually need. It's, in fact, I'm actually really excited to see it, because it'll be some fire protection I haven't even been involved with yet. So, but they were very diligent in getting with me and showing me everything that they are going to be doing there, and I do feel very comfortable with what they have and how their operations will be.
Questions for Bob? Okay. Ms. Ready?
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. So, they're basically just receiving shipments and redistributing. There's no processing. There's no sort of factory application. It's just redistribution? Is that true? Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Well, if I know one thing, since I've been around here for 11 or 12 years, I know that our fire department is very thorough. And anytime that they give somebody a pat on the back like they've given you, it must be good stuff, so. Anyone else before we go to the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular gen item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action. Mr. Smith?
I move to approve the special use permit associated with PCN 12020 based on findings S1 through S6, including conditions 1 through 6, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve this gen item as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Welcome to Sparks, folks. We appreciate you coming here and making the investment in Sparks, and good luck in the future, John. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to 8.2, public hearing, consideration and possible action on a master plan amendment request to remove the Eratza Ball East Area Plan from the city of Sparks' master plan. Mr. Thompson? It's not very often we see you twice in one meeting.
I know, and I got the next item too. Third time's a charm.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tim Thompson, senior planner, again for the record. This is a master plan amendment request to remove the Eratza Ball East Area Plan from the city's master plan, and then to also change the land use designation on a 1.43-acre parcel from childcare to office professional, and then from mini storage, RV storage, to general commercial on 6.66 acres. The Eratza Ball East Area Plan is the area that is located north of DISC, south of Los Altos, and east of Vista Boulevard. It's the triangular-shaped piece, Eratza Ball Drive, Basco. It's comprised of the Imagination Station, the Rock Church, the Commercial Center where Pinocchio's is located, the mini storage facility, the Tanglewood Grove subdivision, as well as the office project that's located to the north there. And then there's a Chucky Meadows Water Authority pump site there as well. This area plan was approved and adopted into the master plan back in the late 1990s. The intent of the area plan was to help guide the development on this particular area of land. There was a concern at the time of the potential for a big-box retailer, which could have the potential for large traffic implications. And so, this plan was put into place to help minimize that potential. At this point, the area plan or the area in question has been largely developed, with the exception of the piece just south of Basco, on the southeast corner of Basco and Vista Boulevard. There is a building that was constructed on that site that's been vacant for a number of years, and then there's some vacant pads there. It's important to point out that that particular site is under a previously approved development plan. Staff was approached by two different property owners that were seeking to expand their businesses or expand the opportunity for them to do business. Given those requests and given the direction that staff had received last August at a city council retreat to look for ways to promote jobs growth and to streamline the process, staff believed that it was appropriate to consider the removal of the Eratza Ball East Area Plan. The Eratza Ball East Area Plan had been somewhat of a barrier. If you look back, there were several master plan amendments, several area plan amendments that had been done over the years. The first amendment actually came just months after the plan was originally adopted. And then over the last 10, 12 years, there have been a number of other amendments to the area plan itself. Given that, staff went to the planning commission and requested that they, or asked that they support a recommendation or support the request to remove the area plan. Certainly, it's not staff's intent to do anything without any kind of permission or direction. Since the planning commission generally is the body that decides on master plan amendments and makes the land use decisions, although the council does certify them, the way the law reads is the planning commission actually makes that approval with council certification, unless, of course, there is an appeal. So, we believe that it was appropriate to go to the planning commission and seek their direction on this. They did believe that it was appropriate for us to consider the removal, and so staff has moved forward with that process. We did take the recommendation to the planning commission, who did approve the change to remove the area plan. And so, we are here today asking that the city council certify that request to remove the area plan from the master plan. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Tim. Mr. Lawson?
Do you get any comments one way or the other on this master plan amendment?
From residents or...
Anyone. I'm sure you had to notice this, right?
We did. We did do a neighborhood meeting as required by state law. That neighborhood meeting was held at the Rock Church. We did have, I don't know, 12 or 15 residents show up. It seemed that much of the concern revolved around traffic more than anything. I don't think that there was any specific concern about the area plan or the removal of the area plan. I think that much of the concern was based on existing conditions, if you will. And so, that's kind of where we left it off at. I think as we get into the next item, we can have some more discussion about impacts related to the next request that is associated with this and is more or less a companion item.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? You want to do these, you want to discuss both at the same time, Tim, or would you rather us vote on one and then go to the next?
I think it would probably be appropriate to vote on one and then go to the next in this case.
Anyone else on 8.2, questions? Okay. This is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular gen item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action. Mr. Carrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to certify the master plan amendment, Resolution 3220, associated with PCN 12015, adopting findings MP1 through MP4, and the facts supporting these findings is set forth in that report.
Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve PCN 2015. Any further discussion? 12015. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one. Mr. Schmidt is a no. Okay. Moving on to 8.3, PCN 12009, public hearing, consideration and possible action on a master plan amendment request to change the land use on 3.37 acres from office professional to general commercial on a site 3.37 acres in size generally located east of Vista Boulevard, south of Basco Way, north of Eratza Ball Drive, Spark, Montana. Go ahead.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Tim Thompson, senior planner for the record. This is a master plan amendment request from DDC2LLC for a change in the land use on 3.37 acres from office professional to general commercial. This is the property that is located on the southeast corner of Basco and Eratza Ball, or I'm sorry, Basco and Vista, and we're going to be right in this area here. This is the site that is partially developed. Again, there is a building that was constructed on this site several years ago. It's never been occupied, and then there are some undeveloped pads. The property owner, Mr. McDonald, has had a difficult time leasing the existing building and finding tenants for the construction of the other buildings within the development. The, first and foremost, the area plan that was just removed from the master plan that had some restrictions associated with it, with the removal of that, we can simply look at the professional office zoning, which, again, is quite restrictive. And so, Mr. McDonald is looking at changing the land use from office professional to general commercial, and then following that up at a future council meeting with a rezone to C2 general commercial to essentially allow a wider range of uses. He's seeking the ability, or at least the opportunity, to seek other users, and I will let them speak more to that. In looking at the locational criteria for the general commercial zoning, this is not inappropriate for general commercial to be located along a major arterial, particularly Vista Boulevard. So, simply based on the locational criteria, staff can in fact make the findings to support this land use change, and the planning commission has forwarded, or the planning commission has approved this change, and we ask that the city council certify this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Thompson. Mr. Carrigan?
Tim, when it, if it does get changed to C2, what are the okayed uses for that? Just for some reason, all the attached files, I couldn't open them up, so...
Sure. The, let me... Just keep in mind that this is related to the zoning and not necessarily the land use aspect, and I guess we can't really read that. So, the first column here is our uses that are permitted without a special use permit. Generally, the PO zoning, our professional office, medical clinics, banks, in-home childcare, is really the gamut of those uses approved in the professional office. And then the C2 allows the comparison goods. It also allows the office and clinics. It allows retail, personal service shops, again, renewable energy and home childcare, entertainment facilities, restaurant bars, health clubs. So, there are some additional uses that are allowed there. And then, just by the number of bullet points, you can see there are a greater number of uses that would be permitted with a special use permit.
So, what's the plan for that?
For...
I mean, there's got to be a plan. What do they want to put in there?
I honestly, I cannot speak to that. I would defer to the applicant on that.
Okay, I'll ask the applicant then. What do you want to put in there?
Come on up and give us your name for the record, sir.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Chris Baker for the record. In regards to Councilman Carrigan's question, really, we're, we don't really know, you know? We're looking to open it up for flexibility. I think, you know, the PO zoning, and it's kind of tough to discuss this during the master plan, but the PO zoning, as you can tell by the list of uses, is very limited, you know? And I think the office building that's been built and completed since 2008 and still remains vacant really demonstrates that. So, you know, with that, we're trying to open it up to, you know, uses that, again, for the most part, it's an infill site now. You know, the pads are there, the building's existing, parking's there. We're looking just to open it up to be able to use retail uses, you know, maybe eateries. That's really limited now. We can't do that such.
Thank you.
Is that it, Mike?
Yeah.
Ms. Ready?
Thanks.
Pinocchio's is actually located in the center to the south. They're actually located in, on this property here, which is already master plan, general commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to point out that that whole area right there was the same thing they're asking for.
Correct.
On the other side of the street, yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, let's, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public. Anyone want to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Questions for the applicant or for Tim Thompson? Anyone? Okay. Looking for a motion, then, I would assume. Looking for a motion, then, I would assume. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I'm not sure this is the right motion, though, is it? The only one I have is the same one for the master plan amendment. That's good.
Right. We're only doing the master plan amendment today. The rezone will take place at your future meetings.
Well, it's the same exact motion. Isn't that the same motion we just did?
This is PCN 12009?
Oh, 3221?
Different resolution number.
Okay, same motion, just a different resolution. Okay. Well, then I'll move to certify master plan amendment 3221, associated with PCN 12009, adopting findings MP1 through MP4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the planning commission staff report.
Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Kerrigan, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve. Agenda item 8.3 is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one, Mr. Schmidt is a no. Okay. Thanks, Tim, thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate your time. Okay, next is comments from the city council and city manager. Mr. Smith?
Tim, concerning 6.7, that's the change for the RV parks. Is there anything we can do as a city council that would override what the HOAs are doing when people are trying to get their trailers and RVs ready to go on a trip? For instance, where I live, they give you four hours. So if I wanted, if I wanted to leave at 7:00 in the morning, I can't even get it there until 3:00 in the morning. Is there anything we can do to pass that and make it 24 hours or, and then that would override what they do?
My experience has been that when you're talking about CCNRs, they are private agreements between the individual property owners, and the city is generally not a part of those CCNRs, not a part of that private agreement. I would defer to the city attorney, however, my response would be no.
City attorney's response would also be no.
No.
We can't do that. We can't interfere with a private contract.
You guys are no fun. They're on, they're on my case right now for my yard, yeah.
I cannot believe that.
Yeah, well, you guys are no fun.
We could all come over and help you pack.
See you at 3:00 in the morning?
Let us know.
Pretty much it.
Yeah, that's about it, okay.
You're just going to have to leave later on in the day, that's all.
It was just an example. I'm not that early, anyway. And then I have one more item. This is for Mr. Rundle. Would you look into the, for instance, the senior daycares on sprinklers? Right now, they can go to five persons and they can go to eight now if they're sprinkled, but we don't have any provisions for them to go to eight, I don't believe. Did I say that correctly?
I understand what you're trying to say, and so, I will.
I haven't a clue.
He can interpret councilese.
The seniors are watering their cars.
No, they're not, no. No, currently, if they have a senior daycare, you can, you can house up to five people.
Right.
If you want to go higher than that, you have to have your building sprinkled.
Correct.
Inside.
And the zoning code doesn't permit it to go over five regardless if you, if you sprinkled or not.
Right. I'd like to see the pros and cons on that.
Yes, sir. And we'll bring that back to the council now that it's been.
And Gino needs a place to stay and it's full. So I play the sixth.
It's coming right around the corner.
And those retired planners someday, right?
Yeah, okay. You look into that for me?
Is that it?
That's all I got.
Mr. Kerry, and then you, then Mr. Adams. Mr. Kerry?
Thank you. I just wanted to extend a special thanks to Jim Rundle today on the chemical facility on Briarly Way. That was a complex matter and it involved an unusual process. And I think in the long term, that's going to be a good gain for our community, for economic development. We brought a new business in that's going to be distribution point for a lot of things that are used in science. And I think having him in our community is going to make a difference. It was complex. It required us to work through state offices that we don't normally contact. And I wanted to thank Jim for doing just a great job. He took that on and was the point person, ran the process smoothly and made sure that folks like Bob King did their diligence to make sure it's going to be safe. But Jim, I think you made a big difference today, and I wanted to thank you.
Well, I echo the same thing from people that worked on this from the other side, from LSA Star's side, was they were very, very pleased with the city and the process and with you especially and how you got them through it. It was difficult, so thanks. We really appreciate it. Mr. Adams, did you have something?
I noticed that during his review, nobody brought up the fact that our city manager stole one of my secretaries. And we, we are very fortunate, though, to have a new employee with the city of Sparks, Mary Lee Smith, who's here today. We're looking forward to working with Mary Lee. She brings with her a wealth of experience. She's very professional, and please feel free to come by and say hello.
Welcome, Mary Lee. Would you like to say anything?
Sorry, I'm not here.
Well, you've got to come down and accept your official Sparks pin. Everybody has to have an official Sparks pin when they're a new employee. I don't know if Chet has given you one or not, but I'll present you with this one. He was remiss in not doing that. There you are, Mary. You're welcome. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.